Good evening and welcome to the April 17, 2023 Legislative Action Meeting of the Happer-Horsom School District of School Directors. Please be aware this meeting is being recorded. The opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Happer-Horsom School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Happer-Horsom District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. Could we please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stone, can we have a roll call, please?
Teresa Brown?
Here.
Tara Connor-Halston?
Here.
Susan Hunsinger-Hoff?
Here.
Maggie Kissner?
Here.
D.J. Schultz?
Here.
Erin Stroop?
Here.
Erin Whalen?
Here.
Jennifer Wilson?
Here.
David Brown?
Here.
Nine board members present.
Thank you. There was an executive session immediately preceding this meeting to discuss the matters to be considered on this evening's agenda, personnel, legal, and real estate matters. The meeting lasted approximately 50 minutes. At this time, we are in Section 2 Public Comment. This is the time for the public to offer their comments and agenda items only. All their usual procedures for public comments as follows apply. Please state your name and municipality of residence. If you wish to speak during the public comment session, we ask that you please sign in on the sign-in sheet located in the front of the auditorium. Your name will be called in the order that your name appears on the sign-in sheet. Once your name is called, we ask that you please come to the microphone that will be located in the front of the auditorium to speak. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and please remember that it is the board's practice to not engage in dialogue with speakers.
Mr. President, there were no individuals who signed up to speak on agenda items this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak on an agenda item this evening that did not have the opportunity to sign in? Okay. Moving along to minutes. I'm looking for approval of the following minutes. February 23 Facilities Finance Committee minutes, the March 1 Policy Committee meeting minutes, March 14 Curriculum Committee meeting minutes, March 20 Legislative Action Meeting minutes, and the March 30 Facilities Finance Committee minutes, and, sorry, April 3 2023 Work Session Meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda items, again looking for a motion to approve the following. Bills and voided checks report, budget transfer and adjustment report, capital projects report, D child program report, E food services report, F medical funds report, G payroll report, H student activity report, I student scholarship memorial report, J tax collectors report, and K treasurer's financial report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Human Resources action items, looking for a motion to approve the Personnel Action Items for Human Resources.
So moved. Second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Can we have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Stone? Oh, you're getting it, sorry. Wanted to make sure.
I would try to do it from memory, but did not feel comfortable. Teresa Brown?
Aye.
Tara Connor-Halston?
Opposed.
Susan Hunsinger-Hoff?
Aye.
Maggie Kissner?
Opposed.
D.J. Schultz?
Aye.
Erin Stroop?
Aye.
Erin Whalen?
Opposed.
Jennifer Wilson?
Aye.
David Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries, six to three.
I did notice that during the approval process, there was no discussion on those, the items that were opposed. If any of the people that opposed it would like to discuss their opposition, we'd be happy to have that.
Thank you. Again, I don't know how much we're allowed to speak about hiring in public, but honestly, our ultimate oversight is the board's responsibility. And I had requested more information, and I read everybody's responses. I do still feel that we need that information to do our due diligence. We want to make sure we have the right staff for our kids, and I'm not questioning anyone's job, but I would like that additional information before I vote. I don't want to just rubber stamp what someone told me to approve. I wanted more information. I don't know if there's a law denying me to see the other resumes or not, or a policy, but I am surprised that my request was ignored for those other resumes.
I could tell you with 100% certainty, it certainly wasn't ignored. It was acknowledged by a few members of the school district administration team. Any other comments?
I had questions, some questions on the person, some were answered, and others, I just felt I would have liked to have seen a little bit more of who was available, as opposed to saying this is just the only one if multiple people got to that level.
So you were going to judge a person whether or not they were qualified by just their resume?
That's what I was asked. I was asked to judge a person by just giving their resume and said, this is who we felt. But there were nine people that got to that level.
We're given a report from HR that says about the interview process, how many candidates went through the interview process, why this candidate they're presenting is the best candidate for the position. So I wouldn't say that we are voting on this based on just a resume. We're given a report by HR about what the process for hiring was and the due diligence that they have done, and they've done their job. So I don't understand how you getting the resumes of the people that they are not presenting as the candidate would allow you to make a judgment call.
Looking at the resume that was presented to me, I had concerns. Some concerns were answered, some were not. If there were nine people that made it to that final stage, and I was told this is the one that we want, and my questions, I wasn't 100% secure on the fact that this is going to be a, it wasn't an assistant in a class. It was a lead teacher in a class. It was someone who was taking a complete role on special needs children. I felt that if this was the best, show me that this is the best.
But again, I say you can't judge a candidate by just looking at their resume, and you wouldn't be able to say that that person was the best just looking at their resume.
I think, I think part of it-
Correct. But that's what you asked me to do. You showed me one resume and said, this is who we want you to do because we went through these steps. Well, you went through all those steps with all nine people.
I think, I think-
No, we did not. So out of the nine applicants, seven applicants were invited for first round interviews. Two candidates were asked to return for second round interviews, which contained a scenario and development of positive behavior support plan. Following these interviews, this person was determined to be the finalist in an interview that was held by the assistant superintendent. So not all nine candidates made it to that final step.
And I think at the end of the day, what we're voting on is acknowledgement of the professionals in education that did these interviews, the professionals in human resources that did these interviews, as well as the assistant superintendent who oversaw that process and had the final, the final say, and our trust as a board to govern, not manage, that process, those individuals that we put in those places.
With this resume, again, I also had some concerns. And again, I do not want to discredit our employees that did interview them, but I do want to do my due diligence. The people we hire are in our schools with our kids all day. So if I would like to see the other resumes, and then that might lead to other questions, I think that's transparency, and the board, not all the board was given it. We should have been allowed to see the resumes at our request, unless there's a law saying we can't. I don't understand why it was just ignored. You can say you don't think it's reasonable, but if some of us did, I don't understand how you could legally deny us that information. We just want to make sure we have the best teachers for our kids.
I don't think there's a legal, a legal issue here, rather. In my third, three and a half years now on the board, this is the first time a candidate has been suggested they weren't potentially the best candidate. It's the first time in three and a half years that someone has asked to see other resumes. So to suggest that all of a sudden this process with the same individuals on board have done something different is interesting. It's questionable, and, you know, again, I will reiterate the fact that we have put trust in the people in positions to bring us forward the best candidates for the job. We are board members, we are not HR professionals, well, most of us aren't. We are not people that have interviewed these candidates, been able to ask questions and get responses, see them in action, and have everyone oversee that process. So again, for the first time in three and a half years, I find it a little suspect, not at all.
Would you define the difference between micromanagement and what we're supposed to do as board members?
Who would you like to answer that? She asked a question about our responsibility as board members, and it is, you know, governance versus management. So we are not managers of the district. We do not oversee process. If we have a concern with something, we would go to the superintendent, who is the person that we have hired, and said, I would like you to look into this particular situation. And that, that kind of gets wheels in motion for them to process and manage that concern or issue and report back to us, not to manage necessarily, not necessarily, not to manage the process of how it's done. Is that-
I didn't ask to manage the process. I didn't ask to sit in any interviews. I didn't ask to, to question everything. There were some questions that I had, which were very quickly and easily answered, which was beautiful, but there's other questions that I, I had, and I would have liked to have seen other candidates. I don't think asking to see other people when we're the ones who are held accountable. So when this teacher is, this teacher could be the absolute best. So why is it so offensive to say that you can't back up that answer and say, this is the best because these are the other resumes and look what we had? And then we wouldn't be here. I'd be like, cool, this truly was the best person. But the school board is the one who ends up being accountable because when the teachers or the parents are saying, this teacher that you hired is inadequate or could be a little bit better, or I can't believe they're getting hired at that rate and they can't do the job that well, they come to me. They come to me because I'm on the school board and I approved it. So why wouldn't I want to know who all's, who all made it to a certain level and if they really are? I didn't ask to micromanage anything. I just said, please, can I have just a little bit more information on the few people that had gone a little bit further or was right in the, in the running of, you know? And that seems to be offensive.
It's not offensive.
Well, if I offended somebody, I'm glad.
It is not offensive. It's understanding how you would make a judgment call based on what somebody has written on a piece of paper about how good of a teacher that they're going to be. You can't look at just a resume and say, okay, that's why this person is the best candidate. It's the whole, the process as a whole, which we have received the report about the process as a whole from HR. We were not involved in it, obviously, but I, I don't understand how getting the resumes would allow you to make a judgment call about a person, whether or not they're the best candidate for this position.
It's also my understanding that you may have had a friend that applied to this position, which could potentially be a bias situation as well.
The friend that was applied was just a generic, it was true. Actually, I've had seven friends that applied in this school district over multiple years and didn't get hired. I'm not offended by it at all, just the fact that I knew someone else who was hired with totally different background. How did you get to this person over another person? And it has nothing to do with a friend who applied. That has nothing to do with it. In fact, well, that's hindsight, but it was just I knew that there was knowledge of another person who applied for this position and could be better or worse. I don't know.
So if I may say a couple words. One is, you know, I try to operate with all of our board members as colleagues who can be trusted, and when you ask for a question, I want to provide an answer for you. And I hope that's the relationship that we have to, we can, so we can collectively govern this, this district in an earnest manner, that we're open with one another. So that said, the administration brought this for, this recommendation forward in the same manner that we've brought other hiring recommendations forward since I've been here. There's been a process that's been agreed upon by how the district and the administration relationship will work with a recommendation for a hire. If, and the administration that brought the forward, brought forward that recommendation followed that truly and consistently with how we've done, done so in the past. If we want to, as a board, revisit that process, that's something we could do in an HR committee meeting, that we could look at whether or not that process needs to be revisited. And if there are thoughts on what it, what it should be, I think that we should earnestly listen to those and try to consider those that would deliver us the very best candidates that we can. But I do want to say that through this, and I'm certainly always fine with discussion and, and anyone that may challenge or question, I don't want to get lost, I don't want to get lost in the fact that we are talking about a specific employee here, that the administration is making a recommendation with confidence that this is the best person for the position. And that is our collective goal, is to make sure we put the best quality teacher in front of our students. So from that point of view, I believe that the administration's recommendation was processed with fidelity and with what the expectations that we've had moving forward. But again, if we want to go in a different direction, that's something we could collectively look at.
Not hearing any other further discussions. We'll move on to the Special Service Action Items. In one minute.
I'm sorry, I want to make one more, one more comment about the HR agenda item that was, agenda item that was approved just a moment ago. On the agenda this evening, the board accepted the retirement of Ms. Karen Kiari. Ms. Kiari is here with us this evening, as she is in most meetings. Ms. Kiari has been with the district for over 25 years and serves as the business manager for the district. Her commitment to the district has been impressive in all, in all areas. She has a tireless work ethic and a willingness to dive into the weeds with all aspects of the district's finances. While you may have seen her present on the budget publicly, Ms. Kiari does a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes to support the district in many ways and ensure that we are compliant with the many federal and state statutes and guidelines, and much of our financial and fiscal responsibility is attributable to her and her work. We wish Kiari, we wish Ms. Kiari great health and happiness in retirement, and know that she will be enjoying her time with her grandchildren and family. Thank you, Karen, for your tremendous service, and we wish you the very best.
Moving on to Special Action Items, looking for an motion to approve the PDE Special Education Plan as well as the settlement agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the Business Office Action Items, looking for approval on the following. Revised 2022-2023 School District Calendar, B, the 2023-2024 School District Calendar, C, the PDE 4605 Residences, D, the MCIU Shared Services Agreement, E, revised change order authority limits, F, ratify the allowance adjustment for the Keith Valley Project, G, Investment Consulting Services, H, disposal of obsolete equipment, I, credit change order for the Keith Valley Project, J, ratify Section 125 and Health Benefits Cafeteria Plan and Combined Summary Plan Description, and K, ratify the agreement with fueling system services.
Mr. Stone and I are just going to give a recap of these Business Office Action Items prior to calling for a motion. Items A and B are calendar items. Item A is the Revised 22-23 School Calendar, which indicates one shortened school year for the, for students. We build in two snow days for the year. One of the, one of those unfortunately had to be used with the emergency closure. The other has not been used, and I'm, hopefully not, we won't have another snow day at this point. That, that accounts for the adjustment to the 22-23 School Calendar, and the, the item B is the 23-24 School District Calendar that we're proposing. Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Dr. Ellislog. Item 7C, 4605's, is required action from the state to acknowledge the district's financial responsibility for students that are placed in facilities outside the district. Item 7D is an annual approval for anticipated special education services provided by MCIU for the upcoming school year. Item 7E was recommended by the Facilities Committee to increase the allowance adjustment approval authority limit to $75,000, which is permitted by Policy 610.1, and this action is specifically applicable and only applicable to the Keith Valley Middle School Project. Item 7F was also recommended by the Facilities Committee to account for the additional work that was due to an unforeseen condition when installing the new stormwater system on Upland Avenue. Item 7G is recommended by the Finance Committee to appoint a new investment consultant, Cornerstone Advisors Asset Management, who will succeed our current investment consultant after the district conducted an RFP process. Item 7H is the routine disposal of obsolete equipment and materials. Item 7I was also discussed at the Facilities Committee meeting and represents a credit change order or reduction in overall cost of the project of $218,835 due to changes, due to changes related to the mechanical construction contract for certain HVAC equipment design changes. Item 7J is a rather mundane approval, but is required by the IRS when there are, when there are minor modifications due to changes in federal taxes related to the district's Section 125 Benefits Plan. And I'll point out that this has no cost impact to the district and has no benefit changes to the district. And Item 7K is to ratify an agreement to replace the very old fuel tracking software at the bus garage that we use for state audit purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Thank you, Dr. Ellislog. Do I have a motion to approve items A through K?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'm going to need to abstain from voting on item G, Investment Consulting Services, due to a conflict of interest with my employer.
Thank you. Should we separate out G? Or you just, you can vote on it with just that abstention. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Committee Reports. Curriculum Committee Report, Ms. Hunsinger-Hoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee has not yet met in April, but we will be meeting on April 25 at 3:00 PM via Zoom. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities Committee Report, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, the Facilities Committee met on Thursday, March 30. The committee heard an update on the Keith Valley Project, which is progressing with significant site work to construct the underground stormwater system and prepare the building's foundation. There have been a few challenges as work has gotten underway, including the need to relocate some of the existing underground utilities on Upland Avenue. One of the action items this evening was to ratify an allowance adjustment for a portion of that work. The committee also discussed the recommendation to increase the allowance adjustment authority limits in Policy 610.1, which was also approved tonight, to ensure the project can remain on schedule during this important phase of work. Finally, the cost reduction efforts continue as the committee discussed the credit change order for $2,018,835 that was approved by the board tonight for certain HVAC equipment. The Facilities Committee meets again on Thursday, April 27 at 7:00 PM in the Administrative Building Board Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee Report, Ms. Brown?
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, March 30. The committee reviewed the draft 2023-2024 budget documents in detail at that meeting. The administration presented an overall review of the budget developmental, development process, identified the significant variance in revenues and expenditures expected in this year's budget, and reviewed county data regarding the district's overall financial position. There was no action taken regarding the budget, but the proposed final budget is scheduled to be approved by the board at the May 15 Action Meeting, and the final budget is scheduled to be approved at the June 19 Action Meeting. to be approved at the June 19 action meeting. The budget documents are available on Board Doc for review. The committee also discussed the RFP process and recommendations that led to tonight's approval of the Cornerstone Advisors Asset Management to serve as the district's investment consultant. The Finance Committee meets again on Thursday, April 27th at 7:00 PM in the Administration Building Boardroom. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Human Resources Committee Report, Ms. Connor-Halston.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Policy Committee Report, Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. The April 12th Policy Committee meeting was canceled due to some scheduling conflicts, so I apologize for any inconvenience. However, we do have some items that we can move forward with. At our last meeting, we voted on several policies for first read approval, and there were some, no questions, so let me go through those. The policy number 11, Principles of Governance and Leadership as a Second Reading for Approval, with one small change in the markup that you see on Board Docs under lead responsibility, excuse, yeah, responsibly, the words, and board retreats is to be removed and not added, so there was a markup mix-up there, but we can still move forward with that read. Policy 218, Student Discipline, we are recommending as a second read for approval. Policy 218.2, Terroristic Threats as the second read for approval. Policy 218.3, Students Convicted or Adjudicated Delinquent of Sexual Assault of Another Student as a Second Read for Approval. And Policy 903, Public Participation in Board Meetings as a Second Read for Repeal. Policies 218.1, Weapons received approval of the first reading in March, but there were some clarification on the wording, and therefore will be brought back to the Policy Committee to review. Therefore, we're not going to have any action on that tonight, or ask for any action on that tonight. And also, Policy 006, Meetings, also received approval of the first read in March, but there was additional discussion concerning that policy, so that's going back to Committee to review as well. The next scheduled Policy Committee meeting is on May 3rd at 7:00 via Zoom, and information about that meeting will be available on the district website. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are looking for approval of the following policy stated by Ms. Schultz, Policies 011, Principles of Governance and Leadership, Policy Number 218, Student Discipline, Policy Number 218.2, Terroristic Threats, Policy 218.3, Students Convicted or Adjudicated Delinquent of Sexual Assault of Another Student, as well as the repeal of Policy 903, Public Participation in Board Meetings. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Liaison Reports. Student Board Representatives Report, in the front row today.
This Friday was the Junior Proms held at Spring Hill Manor. Me and Harper attended the prom. This event could have not happened without the support of administration and all the teachers who volunteered for the event, so I thank you for all that helped, and everyone had a great time and looked wonderful. Thank you.
Moving on, Eastern Center Arts and Technology, Tanner Terra. Ms. Connor-Halston, my apologies.
That's okay. I have nothing to report. There is some information on Board Docs for anyone that would want to look at it. They're still working on their exit interviews for children that have changed their mind, which they, they want them to do. Like, if it's not for them, they got to try before they buy, and it all works out before they graduate. So it's very interesting what they're doing to make sure they hear the children, we, they make changes, and it is very impressive, but there is more information on Board Docs. Thank you.
Thank you. Federal Programs Report, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Friday, May 5th, we will host our annual Title I Parent Advisory Meeting. At that time, we will talk about the Title I program, the funds and resources associated with it, the curriculum and staffing mechanisms, we'll talk about assessments and reporting results, we'll spend time talking about our family engagement policies and some of these surveys that we've done this year. And additionally, we will talk about next year's allocations and our, our Summer Academy Program. That ends my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Report, Ms. Wilson.
Yes, at the March 29th Board Meeting, Dr. Lorraine Waddell had presented to the Board a highlight of their MCIU Transition Services Program. If you're not aware of what this is, this is for students who are over the age of 18 and are looking for further education to transition into adulthood, and it helps them to learn job skills that they can put into real-life action. They have partnerships with businesses in Montgomery County that work with these students. Also, in the meeting, they had a, they had done a survey of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit staff, and there was an 84% response rate to that survey. Also, in Board Docs is a flyer for the upcoming MCIU golf fundraiser for the Education Association, and there's a full summary of the meeting there as well. And then also, on the agenda for tonight's meeting is the election of the MCIU representative, which I hope will be me again.
Thank you. We need to vote on that now, correct? So, all in, if, need a motion to approve, Ms. Wilson?
So moved. Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Pennsylvania School Board Association Report, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. I think it's really important to make a note that Pennsylvania issued the lowest number ever of new teaching certificates as educator shortage worsens. Emergency teachers surpass new teacher certification. I just thought I wanted to make a note of that. And the other thing is, the US Department of Education has opened applications for a $22.4 million grant program aimed at improving post-secondary readiness for students with disabilities. And also, PSBA is asking for presenters at the school leadership conference. If you're interested in presenting, please apply by June 1st, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Everslog.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sadly, our community experienced a great tragedy last week with the tragic loss of young Matthew Whitehead. While Matthew hadn't been enrolled as a student in our schools, he has been an active member in a bright light in our community, with friends and connections through many community-based organizations. He had been a shining star as a middle school student at Germantown Academy, who last week described him as "an extraordinary child with a smile as bright as the sun." While we grieve as a community, our condolences and thoughts are with the GA school community as well, as they mourn his loss while carrying his promise forward. Please join me in a moment of silence for Matthew Whitehead. There's no easy transition from that, but I have a few other announcements if I could share, please. A few weeks ago, we alerted the school community to an important survey, our Equity and Inclusion Survey. This important survey was to go to parents and guardians and staff on March 31st and to students in grades 6 through 12 on April 10th. Design and distribution of this survey was managed by Hanover Research, a longtime district partner. In the distribution of parents and guardians, several technical errors were made by Hanover with the list of parent and guardian emails we shared with them. This resulted in most parents not receiving the survey until several days after we notified the community to look for it. During the first attempt to correct this, student names were confused with parent guardian email addresses in the contact list, resulting in adults receiving, adults receiving surveys addressed to their children in the body of the email. This resulted in some confusion, with some participants completing the survey with their children rather than for themselves. The handful of folks who did this have been identified by Hanover and have already been given reset links to retake the survey. Happer-Horsham School District student and staff surveys were not impacted by these errors. Providing everyone with the opportunity to participate in the Equity and Inclusion Survey is critically important to us. To correct this problem, the survey remains open and will remain open through Friday, April 28th. Tomorrow, Tuesday, April 18th, anyone who has not completed the survey will receive a reminder email from Hanover and the link to participate in the survey. We will also send a community update tomorrow afternoon with additional context and to alert people to the reminder emails. While this has been frustrating and regrettable, these errors can be corrected and will not prevent us from using the survey. We are working diligently with Hanover to right the issues and look forward to sharing the results in the months ahead. We thank the community for your patience and understanding, as well as your participation in the survey. I'd like to offer congratulations to Happer-Horsham High School senior Caitlin Harrington for being awarded first place in a statewide student financial literacy competition. PA Auditor General Timothy DeFor and Harrisburg University of Science and Technology President Dr. Eric Dar announced the winners this week. Caitlin submitted an essay with the theme, "What Does Financial Literacy Mean to Me?" Her first-place essay also resulted in a $1,500 prize, as she demonstrated the importance of these important life skills needed to achieve future financial success. Congratulations for Caitlin on achieving first place in the state. The district also received a Montco serves Community Service Award from the Giving Tree Organization in recognition of our students' outstanding philanthropic efforts. The organization is dedicated to teaching children the merits of helping others through hands-on service projects. Happer-Horsham School District is the fifth district in the county to have all district schools participate and complete a project. Over 1,000 Happer-Horsham students completed over 1,100 projects benefiting area homeless shelters, food pantries, Meals on Wheels chapters, and first responders. While we certainly appreciate the recognition, we are even more proud of our students' giving spirit and their helping hands. And one more note about our Jared Nature Center. We have a dedicated employee moving to the next chapter, and in her life, selected provider word of acknowledgement for Mrs. Carolyn Koch for her years of dedication to the Jared Nature Center and our school community. A former Simmons teacher, Mrs. Koch, was part of the group that originally established the Jared Nature Center 21 years ago, in the process, bringing to the district a unique vision and facility for outdoor education that has since been a staple for the Happer-Horsham School District experience. In the years since her official retirement, Mrs. Koch has continued to donate countless hours of her time to the upkeep of the Jared Nature Center and support of its programs. Later this month, Mrs. Koch will be leaving the area to be closer to family. She has been what we call the spiritual leader of the GNC for all 20-plus years, and she will be greatly missed. Thank you very much, Miss Carolyn Koch.
Moving on to our second public comment, this is the time for public to offer their comments on either agenda items or non-agenda items. All their usual procedures, as stated earlier, will apply. Janine Solly.
My name's Janine, sorry. My name's Janine Solly. I'd like to thank Kimberly Myers for her detailed special education report at the last meeting. I was an SCL and a special education teacher in Philadelphia, and I understand the time and effort that goes into gathering the data for those reports. I also understand the consequence of Happer-Horsham being in corrective action, as Ms. Myers mentioned in her report, and something I also discovered a few months ago while doing some research. While not part of the report, in talking to people over the last few months, a common concern among many is that some of Happer-Horsham's special education teachers are emergency-certified, meaning they aren't fully certified to be teaching special education students. They were given a temporary emergency certification. Is there a plan in place for them to be fully certified in special education? Currently, there are fully certified special education substitute teachers in regular education classrooms. They've applied to the district and have not been hired, even though they are fully certified, and others have to be given an emergency cert in order to work with the most vulnerable students. I understand what Ms. Brown said, that there are more emergency certs given to teachers now than regular certs, but we have special education teachers subbing in the district right now. Happer-Horsham students deserve fully certified teachers in order to achieve academic excellence. Thank you for your time. Have a nice evening, Janine Solly.
Catherine Nasef.
I'm here tonight, I'm in Happer-Horsham Township and on Lower State Road. I am here tonight in behalf of my daughter Barbara Murphy, who has a conflict of interest. But I am curious as to why neither Mr. Kirchner, Mrs. Fisher, or Dr. Everslog did not have the decency or professionalism to address the fact that my grandson was in his eighth-grade ELA class and was given an assignment on prejudice, othering, racism, systemic racism, discrimination, sexism, homophobia, transphobia, and other forms of intolerance. You continue to assert that this woke ideology does not happen here at Happer-Horsham, and yet when presented with continued evidence, you still maintain you are not teaching this to our children. I also was brought to my attention that Dr. Evanslog received a $200,000 pay raise unbeknownst to the community. It was not presented at the last board meeting, it was not on the agenda, and yet it was passed by this board, and notice was not released to the public until the Wednesday after the board meeting. You seem to forget that you work for us. You throw around the tax dollars on woke education, DEI surveys out of Washington, DC, partnering with liberal companies such as Hanover Research, to take raises and/or give raises in these economic times, and could give two flying figs about the taxpayers as you raise our taxes. What this board has done, along with the superintendent, let me tell you, you've kept the kids out of school almost an entire year longer than any other neighboring district. You forced masking on our children, dividing a PA Supreme Court decision, excuse me, PCR-tested teachers and student weekly in order to keep jobs because they refused to jab or wanted to play sports. That's really bad. Your district and our district here has plummeted to 210 in Pennsylvania, 93 in the Philly Metro Area High Schools, and 5,162 in national rankings, and you don't seem to be embarrassed. Instead of investing in real curriculum and raising academic standards, the money goes to woke programs to divide the kids, force teachers to bow down to the LGBTQ indoctrinations. So what have you all done? What has this liberal agenda school board done for the children? As far as I can see, you've turned the children into radical social justice warriors who think there are more than two genders. Sometime down the future, you're going to be responsible, and it's going to be noted that you have violated your oaths of office, and I've noted this as a grandparent because I was able to follow my grandchildren thoroughly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You get one this time. You missed the first one.
Alan McPeak, Meeting House, Road, Horsham. Part Two, Theological Opposition to Homosexuality. Why do some people complete gender affirmation with sexuality grooming and pedophilia? Fundamentalists of the Abrahamic religions equate homosexuality with mortal sin and degeneracy. From the Bible, you shall not lie with a male as with a woman.
Religious dogma and hateful divisive rhetoric have no place in secular public schools. We also know that gender non-conforming people are not a threat to society despite generations of fear-mongering from religious fundamentalists. Nobody is putting litter boxes in classrooms to accommodate furries. No one is sexualizing or grooming our children for abuse. What we are doing is making space in classrooms for citizens who have heretofore been denied the right to live their lives free from discrimination, a right the rest of us take for granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Sermonara.
Hi, I'm Wendy Sermonara. I don't really have a speech, but I just want to make a clarification in case we have missed something. Was the superintendent's raise on the agenda before the meeting before you voted on it la -- in March, last board meeting? Was it on the agenda so the public could see it before it was voted on? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who did not sign in who wishes to speak?
James McPeak, 17, Meeting House. I am a computer scientist. What that means is that I know how to make these funny little magic boxes do funny little things. Now, a lot of you in here probably don't know how to do that, not in the slightest. But every time you open a Word document, every time you connect to a website, every time you turn your computer on, you trust me and people like me, we did our jobs correctly, that it's going to work properly. And in the case of these, it usually does, because that's what I do. My friend is a nurse. She's about to graduate from Gwyneth Mercy. She's a Happer-Horsham alumni, and she knows many more things than I could ever know about the human body. She knows the proper usage, dosage, et cetera, of drugs that I probably couldn't even pronounce. Every time I go to a hospital to get medical treatment, I trust her and people like her. Even if I don't know what they're doing, I trust that they know what to do to keep me safe and healthy, because that's their job. My grandfather was a construction worker. He built roads. He built the Pennsylvania Turnpike. Now, I don't know a whole lot about building roads. You put down the asphalt and then do the roller thing over it, but I think there's a little bit more than that, but I don't have to know. I just have to get in my car and drive on the roads, and I trust that they're going to get me where I need to go, because the people who built it knew what they were doing. You see a pattern here? Back in the olden days, people were pretty much good at one thing, and that was finding food. And then a wonderful thing happened called civilization. Now, we can specialize in all manner of different things. We got so good at figuring out how to get food that not everyone has to get food. The breadth and depth of human knowledge has become so extensive that it's impossible for any one person to become an expert at more than one or two things. And it's important to recognize what we know and what we don't know. I don't know anything about medical stuff, but my friend does, and I trust that. It's important that we trust that other people understand, even if we don't. And that's an amazing thing about civilization and about this country. We can specialize in anything we want, some of the weirdest things imaginable. You can make a living sitting and playing video games. People do it. You and 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 everyone in this room are good at different things. And it's important for each of us to know what we know and to trust that everyone else knows what they know as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that did not sign in? Thank you.
We thank the members of the community that shared comments. Just a couple responses, some questions. Ms. Solly, a question about teacher certification, and we will follow up with you to give you some details about where we are with our status of certified teachers and the steps we're taking to ensure that we put certified teachers in front of students. So I'm happy to follow up with you on that. Ms. Nasef, we have never had -- shied away from engaging with your daughter about questions about the curriculum. If she has questions about the curriculum, we have more than several occasions offered to engage her and answer questions about that. So the offer always stands if there's a question of a community member that has a challenge of curriculum materials, there's a process to do that, and we're happy to engage.
I also wanted to respond to Ms. Nasef and Ms. Sermonara regarding superintendent salary increase. It was on the agenda, and it was also unanimously approved by the board last month. So both of those things were done in accordance with law. Any other comments?
I have good news, and I want to thank the board and leadership and Dr. Everslog for approving Happer-Horsham to participate in the Student Poll Worker Project. Students can work on Election Day, even if school's in session, as long as they're in good standing, and they get all the permission slips signed by the school and their parents. They can only work in a non-partisip position, and if they need community service, Voter Services is willing to give them those hours in community service also or pay them. And I'm really excited that these kids get to try it. We've had lots of kids do it in the past when the school's closed, but now they can do both elections. So if your kid's interest is, please let them sign up at Voter Services. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just make like a quick comment. I would be remiss in not publicly expressing my thanks to Ms. Kiari, who not only is our backbone of our business department, she's also integral in the Policy Department -- Policy Committee, and she will be very missed. But we all wish you the very best and all the happiness in the world, Karen. Thank you.
I think we all echo that sentiment very much. Before we adjourn, I know that this evening, 8 o'clock, down in the gym, the indoor color guard for the high school, the middle school, and the indoor drum line are going to be practicing for their championships. If you would like to go down for that, that would be incredible. Any other comments? Otherwise, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
One second.
Meeting close, 8 p.m.[1616.01]